Lock and we'll call this meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners to order for Thursday, February 2nd, 2023. And I have asked Commissioner Booker to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Let us bow heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, come before you once again, thanking you for this day. Thanking you for waking us up with breath in our bodies and in our right minds, Heavenly Father, a mind to mind you, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to put a hedge of protection around our community, Heavenly Father. Continue to bless us and keep any kind of disease, any kind of division, Heavenly Father, out of our community. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to watch over those who watch over us, who stand a post for us near and far. All of our law enforcement, our military, and their families, Heavenly Father, for their families serve just like they do. Heavenly Father, we ask for tonight that this meeting is all of you and none of us. Best, all these things, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
With hand on heart, face to flat, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice and law. Thank you, thank you, see you.
This evening, we have the special privilege of a presentation from the Carl Alexander Memorial Fund. The Carl Alexander Memorial Fund is a nonprofit organization created to financially support local law enforcement in ways typical funding is unable. It is named after a man whose mission in life was to serve and protect our former chief of police, Carl Alexander. The men and women of our law enforcement agencies work together for the common goal of creating a peaceful and protected environment for the residents of Glen County. This memorial fund gives back to those who are currently backing Carl's mission for the betterment of our community. We have Grace Albright with the Carl Alexander Memorial Fund with us at this time. If you'd come forward. Grace, if you could go to that mic for us, please.
Hello, everyone. I am here to present this year's check. As you said, the mission statement is listed and is a memorial fund that we have put together and really enjoyed participating in. We, this year, had a big fishing tournament, a memorial trout tournament, where we raised over about $10,000 with that event. Tons and tons of really, really wonderful sponsors for that, lots of people who volunteered their time, a lot of fun fishermen. So we had a really good time with that and it was a great turnout. We also, just throughout the year, have different sponsors who donate money, different people in the community who want to give back, who send some money. So this year, well, last year, we donated $15,000. This year, I have a $17,000 check for the Glen County Police Department, specifically the K-9 unit. The Carl Alexander Memorial Fund is serviced by the Communities of Coastal Georgia Foundation. They have written a letter, says, "Dear Board of Commissioners, the Board of Directors of the Communities of Coastal Foundation is pleased to award a grant to the Glen County Board of Commissioners for the above noted purpose of the Glen County Police Department K-9 unit." The grant is made possible through the generosity of the Carl Alexander Memorial Fund, a component fund of the community foundation. The Communities of Coastal Georgia Foundation was founded in 2005 to improve the quality of life in coastal Georgia by promoting and increasing responsible, effective philanthropy for now and for future generations. Our mission is made possible thanks to the philanthropic and civic spirits of our visionary donors. So I have this check to give to you guys. On behalf of the fund, we thank you guys for all that you do.
And would our officers come forward, please, and come on this side of the rail? Please come forward, just come through and come on in. And Grace, if you could come around too, please, to present them. Thank you. Yes. We still miss Carl every single day, the impact that he had on our county for his years of dedication and selfless devotion to this place that he loves so much. So thank you again so very much. At this point in time, I have a a request from Commissioner Tosterson to make a statement, and we'll take this point of privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Point of privilege, we have had an economic boost to our community this past week with the new owners of the Golden Isle Speedway. I was privileged to attend it. It was unbelievable, the participation and the amount of people that had showed up for that. Just looking around the crowd, it looked like there was probably 50,000 people there. But I understand that most of the hotels at the interstates were all full and grocery stores had been emptied. And it was just a tremendous, tremendous event that happened. But at this time, I'd like to ask Katie Basson to come up. She's our communications director and she's got some more economic information that she can share with us.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Katie Basson, Communications Director for Glen County. As Commissioner Tosterson said, he introduced me and I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Charlene Hammond. She is the owner of Golden Isle Speedway. She and her husband took over the Speedway a little over a year ago. And I'd like to say they hit the ground running, but I guess they hit the ground racing. They are, I asked her how they got into this business and she told me, frankly, it's a family affair. She was raised by a racer, her husband was raised by a racer, everyone in the family has raced, and even her son is a racer. So it is, as I said, a family affair. They have taken over the Speedway and they are hosting quite a series of races. And these are visitors and attendees that are coming from Kentucky, Tennessee, Pennsylvania, Iowa, as well as Georgia and Florida. You said it seemed like 50,000 people? They had about 10,000 each day, and that was four days of racing that they had in the past week. It was called the Super Bowl. And yes, they had over 500 RVs down on the track. The amount of hotel rooms, the amount of spending, it definitely was an economic impact for Glen County. And they have a series coming up. The next one is in March. So we should be very excited about that happening. And I'm going to let Ms. Charlene, she's here with us tonight, to allow her to introduce herself because as she put it, she wanted to let you know what all the noise was going on down at the racetrack.
Y'all bear with my throat, it was out in the night air for over a week. But hi, I'm Charlene Hammond and my husband and I, Wayne, and I own Golden Isle Speedway. And we currently lease it out to our son, Kyle Bronson. He is a Lucas Oil late model driver nationwide. And he'll be hitting the circuit as soon as they come out of Florida this next week. And we have the privilege of having a great daughter-in-law, her name is Amber Lloyd Bronson, who basically grew up at the track. Up until about five years ago, her grandparents, Mr. Frankie and wife Jackie Lloyd out of Jacksonville, Florida, owned it for some 15 years and operated it. When it came available, we talked with them and our children and we felt like that this would give them a way to earn a good living with something that they love to do. We've been here for two weeks helping them pull off the largest event at this facility ever. And I'm sorry, I'm having to read this, I didn't memorize it all. But we've been here for two weeks, like I said, and we appreciate the recognition that all of the Golden Isles Speedway is getting from not only you, the Commissioners, but we've received a warm welcome throughout the whole community. So I'm here to give a real big thank you to you and to various different departments that we've had to work with. We've had to have fire inspections, we've had to have safety inspections and various other Glen County departments. And they've all just been over backwards to help us and guide us and tell us what we needed to do. We intend to make this track one of the top five premier tracks in the country. And we're up against some tough competition to the likes of Tony Stewart, who's a NASCAR driver. He owns a large dirt track in Ohio. It's known as Eldora. And like I said, it is the premier. And he reached out to Kyle and told us that we're well on our way. So that comes from someone that's extremely experienced in that. We were very fortunate when we bought the track that it had a lot of good bones. It just needed a little loving back into shape and we're almost there. Also, when we bought this, my husband and I kept in mind that this would be a really good place for him and I to retire as well. Being Tampa natives, as you know, Florida has really been inundated with people from all over the nation and many other cultures, some which we're not too fond of. We found that we have a lot more common with you folk up here in South Georgia. So we've bought a house on Blythe Island and we intend to grow old with you guys up here. But we wanted to reach out to you tonight and thank each and every one of you for the welcome we got. The Glen County Sheriff's Department, I had the privilege of meeting the sheriff the other night. We've used them out at the track to keep the peace. We had no altercations whatsoever in four days dealing with, if you will, a bunch of rednecks that like to get crazy, but we kept it all under control. And those guys are really doing a fine job. And I need to know who you guys are because all of us have lead foots. So thank you again and we hope to be able to continue to do good business here and be on y'all's good graces.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond, and thank you for the economic boost you've given us. And thank you for taking a facility that we had here to another level.
Tonight on our agenda, item number 26 is CUP 5356. We have a request to defer that until our February 16th meeting. Can I get a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rafalski to defer CUP 5356 until February 16th. Thank you. Oh, yes, sorry. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for General Business and Finance Committee.
Right. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve our consent agenda for general business and finance. Any discussion, any item, any commissioner wishes to pull. Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That brings us to our public hearing, land use, item number 27, ZM 5287, 500 Harry Driggers Boulevard Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the Golden Isles Parkway Paul's Plan Development District, case number GC-3499, to add church as a permitted use at 500 Harry Driggers Boulevard, parcel 03-17616. Chris Amos with CSCC Inc., agent for Roy C. Edgy Bible Baptist Church, owner, Mr. Postal.
Good evening. Maurice Postal of Glen County Planning and Zoning. As the chairman said, the applicant is requesting to amend the PD that the site is in to allow churches a permitted use just on this parcel. The site is located in a residential district of the PD where churches and other houses of worship are not listed as a permitted use. The applicant is also requesting that the maximum building height for a church, again on this parcel only, be 60 feet. The current maximum height in the residential section of the Golden Isles PD is 35 feet. Bible Baptist Church did properly apply for and receive a commercial building permit in 2005 for the construction of the building. permit in 2005 for the construction of the building. There was no mention in any of the review comments of church not being a permitted use in this section of the PD. I looked at the file for Golden Isles Baptist, and it was the same case. They properly applied for and received all the necessary building permits. Now, this is a conceptual drawing of the existing church and the new sanctuary to the front. The footprint for this did receive site plan approval at the January 10th MPC meeting. And this is the side elevations showing the existing church connected to the new sanctuary. The plans for the new sanctuary do show the roof at a 60-foot, and then it does show a spire that goes up to 115 feet. As far as approval of the spire, as I said, it is shown as up to 115 feet. And according to 617, the zoning ordinance, the planning commission must approve a church spire steeple that exceeds the maximum allowed roof height in a zoning district. So, due to this, Bible Baptist would have to go back to the planning commission in the future to get approval for that 115-foot spire. As far as FAA approval, according to Airport Commission staff, any structures at that site up to 70 feet would not need prior approval from the FAA. So, that would mean that the roof, the maximum height of the church itself at 60 feet, would not need approval from the FAA. But of course, the 115-foot spire would. And FAA rules require an application to be filed with them at least 45 days prior to the start of construction. And this shows the proposed PD text amendment that the applicant was asking for and what the MPC voted 7-0 to recommend. Church, of course, would be a permitted use at 500 Harry Driggers Boulevard. The applicant had requested that the maximum height for a church be 60 feet, and that any height above 45 feet must be approved by the Fire Department. The MPC recommended that maximum building height for a church on this parcel is 45 feet. And of course, it just restated the language in the zoning ordinance that spires above maximum height would have to be approved by the planning commission in the future. And Chris Amos and David Amos are both here tonight to speak on behalf of the church, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions? I would like to add before we open the public hearing that I have been involved with Harry Driggers Boulevard for the last 25 years. I worked with the Branniger Realty Group and the Union Camp, which was the parent company of Union Camp. I know that Branniger dedicated two parcels along, it was then called the Autumn Hall Loop, dedicated two parcels for churches as part of their dedication. Can't imagine that their intent was to leave churches out of that intended use. So, I would like to make a motion before we start the public hearing that we would amend that PD text for the benefit of any church or desire to have a church along Harry Driggers. The zoning would be changed to allow that as a permitted use.
Second.
I have a motion by myself, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. Is there any discussion?
So, we're clear as staff. Are you asking us to go back? We'll need to update the ordinances to make that change.
Well, what I'm doing is making a recommendation that we go to the ordinance to make that change and bring it back.
Thank you.
I have a motion by myself, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. Is there any discussion from our Commissioners? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving forward, we'll go into the public hearing, and anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to ZM 5287, please come forward and state your name for the record. To speak in opposition to ZM 5287. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Any that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5287, please come forward, state your name for the record. To speak in favor.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm John Lane. I'm a member of Bible Baptist Church, and I have been since 1998. I was involved in the purchasing of this property out there. Albert Shalander was the agent that we discussed. And I remember the Branniger Group, Union Camp very well, because I'm a logger and I cut a lot of timber for them. And I was familiar with that property and what it was going to be used for. And Albert Shalander had told us that there was properties on there that was earmarked for churches, and this was one of them. We purchased this property, and from what I understand, when we got ready to build it, we had an architect and a contractor and an engineer, and we had everything done and presented to the planning commission, and everything went through. And they never said anything about the height restriction, and it just went through. And so, we were really surprised when David Amos told us that there were some height restrictions out there. And we certainly aren't trying to pull anything over on anybody. We're a Christian church. We're an asset to the community. We've done a lot for the community, and we plan to keep doing it. We're a nonprofit. We only have three staff members that are paid at our church, and they don't, they're not mega preachers. They're just, it's just a little small country church, and we're doing good, and we've got a lot of things going on. And we support missionaries all over the world. Our mission director is right here. Our mission fund, we projected that we would be able to raise $400,000 this year to send money out to missionaries, and that little church right there has done that. We're going to exceed that. So, we're going to up it every year. We are independent. We're not a part of any association. What you see right there is us. That's all there is. And yet, God's blessing us, and we're doing a lot in the community. And we wanted to be there in that area, because all the housing that was coming in, the schools that are out there, the recreation department that's out there, they get to drive by our church every day. That building is going to be a draw. It's going to pull people in. And we're going to be able to increase what we're doing for the glory of God, so that we can just continue. And I don't think we're going to grow anymore right there. If we get any bigger than what we need to, we're going to have a satellite church somewhere. So, this is going to be probably as big as we get here. And we certainly would appreciate your consideration on this. As I said, when we started this, we had a master plan, and we had a shadow drawing of what we were going to do here in the future, and we submitted that also. So, we feel like we've done everything forthright in bringing it forward to you. And again, I appreciate your consideration on this. And if you can help us, just keep your eyes on it, because we're going to make Glen County better. God bless you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would come forward to speak in favor of ZM 5287?
So, Chris Amos, CSSEC Incorporated. Maurice indicated that I needed to step up during the public hearing portion of the meeting. And here to answer any questions you may have. The architect can answer most of them. Obviously, the church isn't allowed land use is something I don't think was controversial at all. The FAA application has been filed. It was in fact filed prior to the rezoning application and the site plan application being filed with Glen County. I don't know why it's taken the FAA so long. I have been in conversation, however, with the Airport Commission, including today, and with the Director. And I think everything looks good with the FAA until we get to the spire portion of this, which he can't really do until we know how tall the roof can be, because they're sort of tied together. So, with that, I will turn it over to David and let him address any other issues and answer any questions.
Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate your time. I think this pretty well represents what our feelings were from a design standpoint. The existing facility starts where the second lower steeple is at. As a part of the original permit, that structure itself is already at 45 feet. But our feeling is, from a design standpoint, the sanctuary ought to be the predominant feature of the property, which is why we're asking for the additional 15 feet to make it the predominant, what everybody sees and draws you to that sanctuary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Amos.
Thank you.
Mr. Amos. Is there anyone else that would come forward to speak in favor of ZM 5287?
Good evening, sirs and ma'am.
State your name for the record, please.
Clayton Edgy. I'm from the Brantley County area. My folks, Edgies, have been in this area for hundreds of years. This church facilitates the aid and the help of people from five counties. They come here. They come here to worship. They come to learn. The church, since I've been there, we've been in the Glen County jails for some 34 years now preaching the gospel on First, Third, and Fifth Sundays. Other facilities like D. Ray James Prison, the prison, the federal prison in Jessup, and Nahuta also, that length of time. I am not a county person, but we come to this county to worship. And because of the greatness of this church and its impact and influence around this community and the surrounding counties, it's an amazing place. And my desire would be that you would honor the request and do whatever's necessary that we may build this beautiful building for a draw for folks that would like to come and worship. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5287?
My name is Milton Hall. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing us to be here this evening and giving us a moment to speak. As the Treasurer of Bible Baptist Church, I would just mention to you, reiterate something that's already been mentioned, is our outreach community service is extremely important to us. We do support right at 100 missionaries that are overseas. We also have local missionaries as well. Those funds are raised here local, and we do try to send those out for the reaching of the, furtherance of the gospel and to reach other people. We're a debt-free facility. We do, when we need to borrow funds, we do that locally. We try to make sure that we're using local people to help us with architecture and building and planning. And we're looking to be a part of the investment in this community. We take this very seriously. We appreciate the consideration. You know, certainly, I know it's important to you. We're not a for-profit. We're a nonprofit organization. We have a pastor. We have a mission. We have a ministry director, and we have a church secretary. Everyone else on the church staff, we're all volunteers, no income earned. We're all church members. We tithe. We provide funds to the church. And I live on the island, the island, Blythe Island, and we love it here. And I moved here in 1997, married my wife in 2000, joined Bible Baptist Church at that time. And it's been a great influence on my life. And I just raising my children there, and we're just trying to grow and honor the Lord with it. And we thank you for your time and in consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5287? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we're back to you.
Can I still ask a question of?
Sure.
Mr. Amos?
Sure.
Either one, David or...probably, this is probably David. Yeah. David, what rationale did the Mainland Planning Commission give you when they denied the request to go to 60 feet and approved 45 feet?
There wasn't a lot of discussion about it. The one thing that got brought up was setting a precedence.
Okay. Thank you very much.
David, one question. Is the steeple, there's already a building with a steeple there, right?
Yes.
So, if you can stay at the same height, that steeple, we really wouldn't be here talking about this, correct? Or is it?
It's the building height.
Yeah.
Because we took the steeple issue off the table at the planning commission meeting.
Yeah.
Because the height of the steeple is going to be all dependent on what my total building height is going to be.
Okay.
So, it's just tough to gauge how high it would be. If it's, I'm at 45 feet where the existing building's at, I've got a much larger flat roof that, in my humble opinion, destroys the integrity, the design of the new structure that we're trying. But it also changes what I'm, how I have to design a steeple to go on top of that.
Okay. Well, it just looks like the other ones, do you know how high the other steeple is?
I'm looking that up right now.
We did measure it.
We do have it, but I can't recall off the top of my head what it is.
And I don't think we put it on anything.
No, I didn't. I didn't put it on that drawing.
And this is, you're raising?
I can say that it's taller than 60 feet. It's up in the 70...
You're doing this to add, why are we going up with the roof? Are we adding more balcony or...just a question.
Yes. Well, the design right now incorporates first level, which is for the majority of the use. But it's also to try to plan for future growth, so that we do have a small balcony at the rear of the sanctuary. So, it will allow them for future growth, which then pushed my allowable head height up higher around the perimeter of the building.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
David, over here. Got one more question. What is the height of the steeple on the existing?
That's what I was just asking. Okay. It's somewhere, we're guessing somewhere in the 70 to 75-foot range.
That's approximately right. And since we were here just to talk about the roof, I didn't print that information out before I came into the meeting. I apologize.
Mr. Clark?
How many acres is your campus currently? Okay. And what is your reasoning from, you're looking for capacity. What is the reasoning for not going wide and staying within the 45 feet?
Most of it is, from a design standpoint, the sanctuary should be out in front of the building. And there's very little land. Harry Driggers makes a loop right there in front of the church. So, trying to expand and go more linear presents a lot of other site planning issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am, of course, in favor of this. This facility is right out my front door as I come out of my neighborhood. I'm in favor of allowing the 60-foot height and the steeple as long as FAA gives approval. I would like to see 10 churches out there with 60-foot buildings and 100-foot steeples. And praise God, maybe we could fill them every one up. So, I think, you know, I think our mission is to do no harm, and I can find no harm in approving this for churches at a 60-foot height. But that's my opinion.
Can we get a motion, Maurice? Do you have a motion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
For one of the members. Do you all know Pastor George Lewis? He just moved out there. Okay. They just took over a church out there. I was just curious. Thought they would be good neighbors for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to entertain a motion, please. I'd like to move to approve the proposed zoning decision.
No.
At 60 feet?
No, at the recommended height.
Yeah, to make it more clear, you could say as proposed by the applicant. That would cover the 60 feet.
Proposed by the applicant.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker.
That is at 60 foot is the motion now, not 45.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion?
One other point of clarification. What was the 70-foot in the information? What was that?
The FAA, anything up to 70 feet wouldn't need prior FAA approval, so...
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a proper motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is five for, those against to oppose. It does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on our agenda tonight, item number 28, appoint one employee to service the public works representative. as the public works representative on the pension committee, and the applicant is James Hill. Do we need motion and a second? Our attorney has stepped out. I think we just appoint, but we will take a motion and a second just for, for, yeah, cover the hill. All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Booker. All in, any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number twenty-nine, and I will point out that James Hill's term will begin immediately and ends on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Item number twenty-nine, appoint one employee to serve as the general employees representative on the Glen County Pension Fund. The applicants are Kim Bankston and Stephen Croft, excuse me, and that is to name one employee. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Kim Bankston.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rafoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to nominate or appoint Kim Bankston to the general employees representative of the Glen County Pension Committee. Any discussion? That term begins immediately and ends on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Under General Business, item number thirty, consider adoption of an amendment to the Glen County Code of Ordinances to add section two dash two dash seven point two to allow commissioner liaison appointments to be made to other agencies and organizations and for other purposes. I had asked our attorney to look at formalizing appointments to these other agencies. These are not voting members of those agencies. They are just liaisons to bring back information to the county commission upon attending those other organizational meetings. And I asked to formalize it because often, if it's not a formal appointment, it's a case of anybody could go and everybody should go. Anybody could go, but nobody went. So where we want to name a commissioner to attend is our representative there for informational purposes only, and that's why I'm bringing that forward, gentlemen. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly in support of this, but can you give us a couple of examples?
One would be the Economic Development. One would be the Chamber of Commerce. One would be the Airport Commission, and one was the CVB Board. Well, we have someone that goes sometimes and
The commission, the airport commission.
Yeah. I generally attend the Airport Commission, and I've attended a good number of the others, but we just want to make sure that we have someone there. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Question? Oh, did I not ask for the motion? I guess I heard Commissioner Booker. I'm so sorry. Can I entertain a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Clark, and a
You want, should we read the motion there?
Yeah.
You want me to do it, Alan, or you wanted it?
Consider an adoption of amendment to Glen County Code of Ordinances to add section two dash two dash seven point two to allow for commissioner liaison appointments to be made to other agencies and organizations for other purposes.
All right, so the motion has been read, executed. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Maybe we can get the horse back in front of this cart here. So, item number thirty-one, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Brunswick Housing Authority to provide funding for the Gully-Geechee Situation Park in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars with funding provided by District Five Capital Allocation Fund. And Commissioner Booker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request came to me, which really was in line with something that I've been working with our staff on for some time. As you all know, that probably ninety percent of the poverty is in my district. And so I challenged the staff some time ago to help me put together a revitalization plan. And one of the ideals that came out of that was using parks as catalyst projects. And we started over in the Arco Community. As you all know, we repurposed the old baseball field to soccer field, and you all have seen what we've done at the newly named Ahmad Aubrey Park. And so this project is there, because there's been a forty, maybe fifty-year-old memorial to black veterans. And the housing authority had given some twenty-two thousand dollars for the project. And then Kevin Pullen suggested that he could come up with an additional statues or figurines to represent some of the men who came back, and some of them were not welcomed home like others. Some were lynched, some were beaten. And so this is purely to support his rendition of this. You all could see in your report the design that they're looking at doing. And so they had, the housing authority had kicked in that amount of money, then I was asked to support that, and that's what this is.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Booker. All discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, and I'm hoping, and this project, these guys reading their names, they're heroes. There's no doubt about that. Anybody's given their life for this country. I know the commission, a few years ago, we built a memorial, Veterans' Memorial Park, and as far as I know, these gentlemen are included over there with everyone else. And I believe the county at the time, their focus was to get a memorial park and then be inclusive of each and every one and have it centered right here by Newcastle. It's absolutely gorgeous. And I believe this project here should be one that's the housing, public housing, and the different organizations. And I met with these gentlemen a few months ago, and they've got a great vision for helping to get, you know, people into workforce and everything. I think their vision here, this should be more of a private funding mechanism, and I know the commissioners approved money, the previous board, to do projects in their areas. But I think as a board of commissioner, I believe what we did by building the memorial park to memorialize these gentlemen, these heroes, and each and every one that's over there is absolutely fantastic. It's a beautiful park, and it's sad that I don't see more and more people over there visiting, doing different things. But that's kind of just my comment on this. And, but the project itself, if you go down and look at the pictures, it's absolutely fantastic, but I believe this ought to be a, more of a private project. Private sector should do this, but that's my comments for what it's worth.
Well, let me, and I agree in part that these guys certainly are heroes, but this effort is more than just what we have over at the, we put over three million dollars in. First of all, it was something that was already there. We're just expanding it. But it does something for the heart of my district and this neighborhood that this veteran park can never do. This is going to be a gathering place in the community, and so that the children there understand exactly what that memorial is. They did not, that little small headstone, they did not even know what that was. I didn't know what it was. I came home forty years ago until I saw it turned over and went and pushed it up, and that's when I read it. And I grew up in there. So this is going to make sure that the children that grow up in there understand that these men should be honored. They're not going to get that over there, because many of them are not going to go over to this park, and that's why we're doing it and expanding it there.
And I agree. I agree with you totally, Commissioner. It's just whether the taxpayers funded for it. That's it. I believe it should be.
Well, we, like I said, we spent three million dollars over here.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I have a question. This might be from Mr. Mumford. I'm not sure. What is the significance of the request for an intergovernmental agreement as opposed to just approving the seventeen thousand dollars for the project?
A good question, Commissioner. So the intergovernmental agreement, or IGA in short, is just, it's an agreement with another governmental entity, and between myself and Commissioner Booker, and their attorney for the Housing Authority, and on their end, we want to memorialize the terms and details for, really for our benefit as well, that set forth how this money's going to be used. It was important to me that the board was going to authorize this, that we had very specific detailed designs on how this is going to be used and what it was going to look like, so that we weren't just giving seventeen thousand and saying, we hope you do what we want you to. It just memorializes our expectations for the Housing Authority, so we can point to that and going forward, and then we know what they're going to do with it. And it obligates them to use it for that money. They can't just, and, you know, and they're okay with the agreement as presented, and that's an order.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll just follow up on what Commissioner Booker said. This is more than a memorial. It's, has an uplifting purpose to it, and it's in Commissioner Booker's district. And to my knowledge, such a capital improvement request is what had been approved for the commissioners before, to utilize as part of their million dollars.
Thank you, sirs. Is there any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
I don't, I can't see the motion.
While he's looking for that, Mr. Chairman, St. Simon's wouldn't have the parks that it does without this same type of forward movement and effort over the years. So I'm supportive of that happening in Mr. Booker's district, too.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Brunswick Housing Authority to provide funding for a memorial at the Gully-Geechee Situation Park in the amount of seventeen thousand with funding provided by District Five Capital Fund Allocation.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, six for, one against. Well, we've come to the portion of our agenda where it's our public comment period. We have tonight, Mr. Bud Galland, to come forward, if you would, please, sir. State your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you for being with us tonight.
My name is Bud Galland. I live on St. Simon's Island. First of all, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'd like to talk to you about the Village Creek Boat Ramp at the far end of South Harrington. First of all, thank you to all of you for your work and your work with the DNR to allow for the new construction at the boat ramp. I think I can speak for many fishermen, boaters, kayakers, and hunters who are very excited about the new changes that are happening right now. It'll be very welcome to all of us. My reason for addressing you tonight is to request the formal naming or renaming of this boat ramp to Cousy's. So you know I have no pony in the race. I don't, I've never met Cousy, and I never met any of the Sullivan family. I've been fishing out of Cousy's for probably more than forty-five years. I've always referred to it as Cousy's, probably as a result of the islanders who took me fishing the first time there, launching from the boat ramp. It was until many years later that I found out a little bit of the history about Cousy. Cousy's father, Ben Sullivan, set up Sullivan's Fish Camp at the Village Creek location. Cousy continued that living in a modest cabin up on stilts in the marsh. He was a businessman. He sold bait, tackle, refreshments, and he rented boats to fishermen. He operated this business into the early sixties. If I can quote or borrow from a local author, Jingle Davis, Cousy Sullivan was one of the best fishing guides on the Georgia coast. He knew where and when the fish were biting, what bait to use, how deep to fish, and whether high or low ebb would yield a mess of speckled trout or spotted tail bass. If you wanted to learn how to catch fish from the best, you would go see Cousy. Cousy died in nineteen seventy, and he's buried on St. Simon's Island. I can think of no more special memorial to Cousy than to name this boat ramp in his honor. Again, as written by Ms. Davis, "What better place than the boat ramp that still draws anglers and nature lovers well into the twenty-first century? How hard could it be to do this right thing and name a nameless county boat ramp for a local fishing legend? I'm now retired. I boat and I fish more than anyone has a right to. I launch my boat out of Cousy's as often as I can. It's a special place with lots of history to both me and the county. While Cousy is now gone, it's my hope that his legacy will continue at Cousy's Boat Ramp." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
That concludes our regular agenda tonight. Except for executive session, we have calls to go into executive session for personnel and for property.
Just property that I'm aware of, and personnel as well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, go in executive session for personnel and property.
Acquisition.
Second.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, and a second by Commissioner Clark to go into executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand recessed. That is unanimous. We stand recessed.
Need a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
We come out executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Totzerson, and I think the first second was by Commissioner Finn Dig. All in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Who's missing? Commissioner Booker. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the executive session minutes from the January 19, 2023 executive session.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Suet to approve the minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to allow the county manager to negotiate up to the midpoint for the director of public safety position.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Finn Dig and Commissioner Booker to approve the mid-range salary for a public safety director. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
We stand adjourned.